There we go.
Go ahead, Tom.
All right, announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. We could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anybody that has anything that wishes to come before the meeting that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none, Nora would you call the role, please?
Mr. Parraway.
Here.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Frigieri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
And Mr. Mandell.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Mr. Vaughn Aiken.
Here.
Vice Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
All right, we have a resolution in front of us at this point, Saraceno disposal. Do I have somebody who would like to move this resolution?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
A motion to approve the resolution for Saraceno disposal, line 63 Edwards Road, block 767, lot 30, application 17:515, minor site plan with C variance.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Hernandez.
Very good. Nora, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Parraway.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mandell.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
That's all.
All right, thank you. Well, that leads us to the only real item on our agenda tonight, the master plan public hearing. I am going to turn the beginnings of this off to Ms. Favati, our planner.
Is this on, Nora? Is it on?
Yes, it's on.
Okay. Oh, good, so I don't have to move. I'll just hold it. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we're happy to be here tonight. Some of you heard this last week at the council meeting, but we're going to do a little bit of a summary presentation, slightly longer than last week, to give everybody an overview of the process and a summary of some of the key recommendations of the master plan. Really, the point of tonight is to hear from the public, some people here, and we want to make sure that you have the opportunity to hear comments from the public that can be then considered for potential revisions to the plan. So I'm just going to quickly go through. In terms of the process, we got started in the fall of 2018, slightly over a year ago, and really, the first, I would say, two or three months of the project, we were really collecting a lot of data, we were having meetings, it was an information gathering phase of the process. And then we built on that, really throughout that fall and the early part of this year, doing a pretty extensive existing additions analysis. The point of that was to establish a baseline of where we are today and what are some of the key issues that are facing the township, what do we need to understand in order to go forward. So we had a lot of meetings with township staff, we had some focus groups with stakeholders, we had a public workshop in November of last year, and really spent that time understanding the issues and also starting to think about what are the recommendations going to be. So we developed, started to develop those recommendations in the late spring. If you remember, we had a second public workshop in June where we presented those initial recommendations to the community, got feedback on that, and then really spent the summer and early part of this fall finalizing those recommendations, refining the plan. We kind of took a pause a little bit while we let the housing plan finish because that had a bit of a tighter deadline that they had to meet. So that actually gave us the opportunity to incorporate some things that, you know, some new things that had happened, make sure that we incorporated the housing plan fully into this master plan. So the results is what you have before you tonight and what I hope all of you have had a chance to review. It's a full draft plan with recommendations, goals, and a vision. And the point of a master plan, we don't have a slide on it, but I just wanted to remind the board, I think you're all familiar with it, but I wanted to remind the public as well, is it's a policy document. It's meant to be kind of a roadmap, a guide for future planning decisions, particularly regarding land use in the township. It's not a law, it's not a regulation. So there are a lot of regulations, excuse me, recommendations that pertain to land use and potential zoning changes, and there are specific details on that, but this is not in itself zoning. So the next step after adopting this master plan would be for this board to start to take a look at the zoning recommendations, maybe dig a little bit deeper, do a little bit of research, and make some recommendations to council. Ultimately, it's the township council who adopts the zoning, so that would be the next step. This does not change your zoning as of now. But just to recap on the public outreach side of it, we kind of kicked it off in the fall of last year, in September, at the Fall Fair, we had just a booth that was sort of visioning, people telling us what their major concerns were, what their big ideas were. We had that first public workshop in late November of last year, and then the second one, as I mentioned, was back in June. We also had a public survey that was open for about six weeks in the sort of early spring of this year, got about 1,100 responses, and we really built off of that survey when we were looking at the recommendations. We, you know, really based a lot of those recommendations directly on what we heard from the survey, so it was really informative, taken by a lot of longtime residents in particular. As I said, we had some focus group meetings dealing with, you know, a set of issues, and so we met with, you know, township staff, some of the committees, for instance, the traffic advisory committee, the environmental committee, really telling us sort of their areas of expertise, what they were concerned about, what their issues were. And the staff meetings also were, you know, highly detailed, things like Parks and Rec and what they're working on and what their concerns are. So all of that got folded into sort of the existing additions piece. When you see those top two boxes, you know, that was part of that existing additions analysis, and then we paired that with what we were hearing from the public at large, the public outreach, both in terms of the workshops and the survey. And based on all of those inputs, we created this, you know, draft strategies, recommendations across these sort of key topic areas. And they're all very much interrelated, you know, a recommendation that pertains to transportation, for example, improving bike and pedestrian transportation might also relate to the environment, you know, in terms of sustainability and reducing car use. So they're interrelated, but there's a lot of recommendations in each, and we'll kind of go through, and we're not going to go through every single recommendation, but we're going to try to hit the highlights here. And in terms of a planned vision, you know, it's kind of good to think about what your community's vision is as a way to guide your overall plan. And really, the kind of the key word that we kept hearing throughout, you know, our existing additions analysis, the meetings that we were having, and the public outreach was this idea of connectivity. So I think everybody's aware of, you know, how there's limitations on physical connectivity in Parsippany just because of the nature of the highways and the road network and how the neighborhoods are sort of separated by that infrastructure. But we also heard connectivity from more of, you know, a social aspect, and this idea that people wanted to feel connected across neighborhoods, you know, that they identify with their neighborhood, but can we also create more of a townwide identity? And what does that mean? And could we do that through things like branding and signage and wayfinding? So it's the sort of the physical connectivity of the street network, it's sort of the social and cultural connectivity of everybody's living in Parsippany, and maybe a centralized cultural location or community center, you know, speaks to that. In terms of municipal services, there's, you know, the desire for there to be a better centralized location for that, and understanding that there are some capacity issues with the current municipal facilities. And then lastly, it's just in terms of communication, people getting information, people understanding where to go to find out what's happening around town. So this theme really connects a lot of different areas. And then, based on that and based on a lot of what we'd heard, we reviewed the existing goals, and I know the board is familiar with these because we spent some time on it. You had about a dozen goals currently in the master plan, and we streamlined those a little bit, we kind of combined some, we added some new ones, and I'm not going to read them here, but we have them on two, well, maybe I should read them for the public. A lot of them are consistent with the prior master plan, I mean, that they're really building on what, you know, what has been sort of the planning goals for Parsipony for some time. So the very first one deals with neighborhoods, making sure that the neighborhoods are stable, that they're preserved and protected, that deals with issues of neighborhood scale in particular. Housing supply, making sure that you're providing a good balance in terms of the types of housing, the location, the density, and you're supporting the affordable housing plan as well. Buffers and transition areas, I believe previously these were two individual goals, and we've combined them into one. That's really about protecting areas where neighborhoods and commercial areas kind of meet and making sure that you're protecting the scale of both. Transportation is just a big one that we have heard throughout the process, you know, mitigating the problems both from vehicular transportation standpoint, but also improving bike and pedestrian transportation and access to transit, strengthening your retail and your office areas, your corporate, you know, commercial areas, helping them remain competitive in a changing environment and a challenging environment. Parks and open space, it's really about enhancing what you have and also connecting it better, both connecting parks to each other and also more to the neighborhoods so that people can more easily access those parks. The next one just really deals with, and this is one you already have, an existing goal, recognizing that you have some environmental resources, you have steep slopes, you have wetland areas, flood plains, and you want to make sure that those are preserved and that the environmental value of those are preserved. And then the next one is a new one, that was a new recent addition, thanks to the input from this board, about sustainability and development. So it's not just protecting, you know, wetlands and those types of resources, it's making sure that in new development or redevelopment, you're actually trying to make things better in terms of the environment and being aware of the impact of that development. Municipal services and facilities, making sure that you have adequate level of facilities and the types of services, and similarly with utilities, particularly with sanitary sewer and water supply, very important on those. Number 11 is dealing with visual and aesthetic character, really throughout the township. 12 was a new one, it's kind of more of a social aspect, but it's about recognizing that you have a sort of a unique community identity here and, you know, need to strengthen that and preserve that and tie that with the historical and arts and cultural resources that you have. And then the last one is one that's in your current master plan as well, really supporting other planning initiatives, whether that's at the state level, county, regional. So that's the set of goals. We managed to get one more than you have now, so it's, I think, a pretty comprehensive set of goals. So I'm going to turn it over to Noah to kind of go through each topic area and kind of hit some high points on the recommendations.
Thanks, Susan, and it's a pleasure to be here. It's exciting to present the plan. I think both Susan and I feel very happy about the way it came together. Just one thing I wanted to add to what Susan said was, when we put the plan together, we put some thought into trying to make the document feel usable for the reader, so we hope it comes across that way. And just one, you know, one way to illustrate that was in the section where we get into the recommendations, the first page or the first, basically the first page of each section just presents a couple of key points from the public outreach that kind of nod to why we made some of the recommendations that we did. They're not all of the things that came out of the public outreach, but just some, just some things to kind of let you know how it is that we got where we did. So for example, for transportation and circulation, this was just one slide from the public outreach that really focuses on, it just shows you clearly that the big priorities were to reduce auto congestion and making it safer to walk, making it safer to bike, public transit, et cetera. So some of the recommendations that we focused on really had to do with those issues. For each of the sections, I'll probably only talk about five of the recommendations, there could be 20 or more in each section, so we're definitely, we can answer questions about those other recommendations should they come up. The first recommendation in the transportation section really got at specific roadway improvements. A lot of the improvements were identified in the 2005 circulation elements. What we did was we went through that document with Justin Lizza to see what had been done and what still could be done, where the township kind of sees the priorities moving forward, and we listed those areas as potential improvements to consider, at least for the next five to 10 years. Other recommendations included the development of a new circulation master plan element. While we were able to identify some of those improvements, we couldn't look at the specific intersections to, you know, determine what was the best alternative, and so a circulation element would really be the next course of action for that, not just for traffic safety, but also for pedestrian and bike safety. So an element that could really incorporate all of those policies that we go into in this document into a really, into a more cohesive element that identifies specific improvements. A separate task could be the adoption of a complete street policy. What that is, is basically a policy that the township will look at when considering roadway improvements, the ability to provide for all users, all age groups, accessibilities, and making sure that those are at least considered in the design stage. Another one was exploring the potential for park and ride permit program, at least at the township-owned facilities, potentially having some permits for, like a priority to residents, and also looking for opportunities to expand the capacity for park and ride facilities. Somewhat related is the potential to develop a bus depot. We understand that there are a lot of different bus networks, and they are not necessarily centrally located or coordinated, so a bus depot could be one possible way to coordinate those networks. And potentially, you know, another idea which will come up later was the idea of a larger community facility or a municipal complex. There could be some partnership there, but that would have to be determined at a later point in time. And then also improve marketing and outreach for existing public transit facilities, including Parsipony's free bus. We heard from people at our public outreach events, a lot of people actually weren't aware that this service exists. So there are things that the township is already doing that could just, we could just promote a little bit better to make them more useful. We looked at existing sidewalks in the township to see which streets have sidewalks, which don't, where sidewalks don't exist, and we created a map that just shows priority areas for sidewalks. And this was really just the first step in the process. We didn't look at kind of the condition of sidewalks, it wasn't a block-by-block evaluation, it was really just the first way to get at where there are, you know, priority areas. And those priority areas we consider would be connecting roads, roads that connect kind of neighborhoods to commercial areas, transit facilities, schools, et cetera. So those we thought should be prioritized. And that could be accomplished through a sidewalk improvement and implementation plan. That also could be wrapped in a wider circulation element if the township chose to do that. Another idea which came up actually during the second public outreach event was creating a disability advisory committee. Came to our attention that some of the streets and intersections aren't necessarily designed for all users, and the township could boost up its efforts in that regard. With regard to economic development, the slide here shows that attracting major employers and employment in the township is a priority. Also, with regard to shopping and commercial uses, residents tended to want a wide variety of uses, and they wanted also to emphasize sustainability and future development. Some of the recommendations, one was, the first step would be to conduct a vacant property inventory, just to assess where properties are occupied, where they're unoccupied, just to get a better sense of the economic climate. With regard to zoning, the township could do more to review permitted uses in business zones to see which uses might be, you know, should be permitted. Some of the other, some of the things we heard as far as commercial uses that might be desirable were fitness areas, brew pubs, and other cultural uses that might not be allowed in certain commercial districts. Another thing was investing in streetscape improvements along North Beverwick Road, Parsipony Road, and Tabor Road, although it's not listed, Tabor Road was mentioned. Part of, part of the streetscape improvements was addressed or at least looked at in a recent complete street study that the township did on North Beverwick Road. They kind of alluded to some streetscape improvements, and we think that that can be continued in other areas. The picture on the bottom right shows Parsipony Road, and I think it's pretty clear that parking areas bleed into the street, there's a wide shoulder, there's no sidewalk, and really, there's not a lot of attention towards the streetscape, and it doesn't necessarily kind of call out for shopping. So some of these areas could use a little bit of TLC just to make them both more desirable from a commercial standpoint, but also more sustainable for stormwater and other issues. Promote history and ecotourism, as Susan mentioned in one of the goals, that was one of the key things, and letting people know where the commercial areas are and the recreation areas are. And Susan will discuss later the potential to streamline zoning districts, particularly those zoning districts that are very similar and might only have certain uses that, or land use regulations that differ. We think that there is a potential to consolidate some of the districts. With regard to open space and recreation, we did hear that there was a big demand to maintain the existing facilities and upgrade them where possible, connect facilities with a wider greenway, and then increase passive open space and increase programming as some of the biggest priorities. So with that being said, the first recommendation was to update the open space recreation master plan elements. That would hopefully address needed improvements, both maintenance and upgrades, and provide a little bit more of a direction as far as costs and kind of next steps. That might include the evaluating the potential for a municipally-controlled indoor recreation facility. We know that the PAL has a facility that has events, but there is a need for a larger facility for a wide variety of uses, and that was one thing that we did hear from a variety of stakeholders. Another recommendation was develop a comprehensive trail plan that will link together parks and potentially the Patriots Path and other off-street networks in the community. And so that would really require a bit of a deeper analysis, kind of a site-by-site analysis, to see where the off-street improvements and on-street improvements could be located. And then complete other previously planned recreation expansions, and we go into details on that, and additional improvements as appropriate. And then improving park signage, outreach, and information, and this kind of is similar to the economic development idea, but just letting people know where some of those facilities are. With regard to environment and sustainability, just go right into it. Again, the first recommendation really has to do with kind of getting a little bit more information. The first step would be to produce a complete environmental resources inventory, which would document the existing natural environmental resources, and that's a useful tool for a variety of different agencies to help plan future improvements. Consider ordinance revisions to better protect resources, including steep slope, stream corridors, and trees, regulations to make sure that those are incorporated so that when it gets to, you know, you or the zoning board, it's a little bit easier to make those recommendations because they are already encapsulated within the zoning code. And then adopting the latest New Jersey DEP stormwater management regulations to maintain it, being consistent with the state. Another recommendation that has been discussed before was coming into conformance with Highland Council standards, so adopting zoning that is in conformance with their standards and getting certified. Develop an environmental sustainability master plan element, so that will look at additional measures such as sustainability, recycling, energy, and that is, it's actually a prescribed element, and New Jersey State has guidelines for what should be included in that element. Increase drinking water capacity and implement measures to eliminate leaking from existing infrastructure. Work towards a sustainable green certification and create a green team. This is something that a lot of municipalities are doing, and creating a green team is also another way to get the community involved in sustainability efforts, so it's another way to increase connectivity. And also strengthening the role of the environmental advisory committee. We met with them, and I think this speaks to the general idea of bringing in the community and taking advantage of some of the expertise that exists elsewhere, and potentially giving them some kind of a role in site plan review as in an advisory role, just to provide a voice for the environment. With regard to housing in neighborhoods, as you can see, the largest priority was to keep the existing scale of homes, followed by promoting sustainable design and preserving older buildings and improving code enforcement. But we did hear that that scale was a big issue. So there were zoning revisions that we see as the potential to protect the scale of established neighborhoods, so that could be kind of fine-tuning the zoning to make sure that there isn't out-of-scale development. Exploring changes to the multifamily zoning to incentivize upgrades. We understand that a lot of the multifamily housing stock is in need of some repair and improvements, and so how do we do that? How can we encourage them to upgrade those facilities, potentially adding in new uses? And so we provide some guidance on that. Also, the potential to upgrade some of the existing perhaps vacant or underutilized office areas, and that could also be incorporating some mixed use and having a more dynamic environment that isn't kind of monolithic in its office uses and providing for some of those other uses that was mentioned, that we mentioned in the economic development section. And then also addressing quality of life issues such as noise, lighting, short-term rentals, intrusion of commercial uses in residential areas. We also heard feral cats, you know, that we heard a variety of things which we brought into the plan. With regard to community facilities, protecting and conserving Parsipony's water supply was the biggest priority, followed by improving school facilities and improving and developing new community amenities. So with that, again, the first priority was to develop a community facilities master plan elements, and that could look at the potential to consolidate some of the municipal services into one complex and really take advantage of having, you know, a space where people could use together, flexible conference spaces, other spaces that really could be better utilized. Also, there's potential to fund a substantial water infrastructure upgrade for pipes and pumps, et cetera. Complete necessary upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant, and those were, I talked about. And then developing a one-stop mobile app for township information and services such as recycling, pickup, other, you know, street closures, et cetera. And I think the need for information was something that we did hear in a number of And for arts, cultural, and historic resources, continue to expand cultural and public events. I think diversity is something that everyone sees as a valued asset in Parsipony, so really kind of use that to your benefit and strengthen and promote that. Also, update the historic preservation master plan element to really look at how to preserve and encourage tourism and preservation of some of Parsipony's existing facilities, and support the township-owned historic properties such as the Stickley Museum, which we understand is, has some space for public events, but a lot of people actually don't know about the Stickley Museum, even people that live within the township, so there are some opportunities there. And then working with Morris County, the Tourism Board, to market the township's historic and cultural assets. So just before, there are a lot of other recommendations in the plan, and those are just a few of them. And I'm going to pass it back to Susan for menus.
There's a ladybug friend on the mic, so I'll be careful.
I think that's good luck.
Yeah, I'll take that, it's good luck. And we're almost finished, I just want to make sure that there's plenty of opportunity for those in the public, but, you know, kind of the final piece of the plan is the future land use plan, and it's sort of undergirded by this map, which you'll see a little bit more detail in the plan itself, but it really identifies the desired future land use. And I will say that there's nothing drastic envisioned in terms of, you know, significant changes in land use. This is meant to telegraph potential zoning changes. So, you know, your office areas are generally concerned, your residential neighborhoods are basically at the density that they are now, certainly particularly the single-family neighborhoods. So a lot of this is kind of preserving the status quo, but it also really telegraphs where you might want potential changes. And then there is a map, which we don't have up here, but it's in the plan, that kind of summarizes some of those zoning changes, and Noah touched on a little bit. You know, we think that there's a lot of room for streamlining, in particular, you have, I think, six or seven business zones that, when you really start to dig into them, they're not that different from each other. We think that there can be some that get merged, some that are streamlined together. Same with some of your office zones. Same with some of your office zones. And you have several zoning districts that, you know, that were clearly created as part of a planned development 20, 30 years ago, which has been developed. And so, you know, it's part of that is developing a strategy to bring those zones back into traditional zoning. In terms of other potential zoning changes, and we've talked about this a little bit in prior meetings, looking at potential for redevelopment. There are not a lot of great, huge recommendations on redevelopment, but there's a few areas that, you know, we do recommend, you know, some of your existing redevelopment areas, maybe trimming those back or expanding them slightly. There's one area on 46 that we've highlighted as a potential for looking at redevelopment. We've highlighted all the affordable housing sites, which are already in the master, the housing plan, excuse me. And I think one of the other recommendations deals with Mount Tabor. I actually had a question on this today from somebody from the neighborhood, and the recommendation here is to look at a potential new zoning district that is specialized just for Mount Tabor. We recognize that it's a very unique area. Basically, it's non-conforming at all with its existing zoning district. And so the idea is that, you know, you'd have to come up with a district that allows essentially the status quo. It allows those homeowners to continue in their homes, not have to go to get a variance for anything that they want to do. But we also wanted to make clear that it is not a recommendation for a new local historic district. That is something we heard from residents in Mount Tabor. They don't, at least the ones who came to the workshop, don't want to be a local historic district. They are already a national registered district. They don't want something onerous. And so it's really just trying to strike that balance, right? And that's not a new recommendation, actually. It's been previously recommended to try to come up with a zoning approach for Mount Tabor. So that's one key recommendation. And I think I'm going to let that be like the last slide. So for those who are in the audience and also the board members, this has been up on the township's website for a couple weeks now. Please take your moment, take some time to look at it, and I hope all of you have had a chance to review it, but we can certainly talk about some of your comments or recommendations. So I think with that, I guess, Mr. Chairman, the next step would be just to hear from any folks who would like to make a comment or ask a question. And we'll be taking notes to make sure that we're tracking all the comments in case they need to result in changes.
Mr. Chairman?
I think we're going to get out of the way.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Susan and Noah for all the work they've done over the past year. I thoroughly read this document. It's quite good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, Steve. Steve sent some comments, which I'll forward to all of you over the weekend, just some corrections that he caught. So thank you for that close read, you know, some minor corrections. And so what we'll do after, after my ladybug friend, I don't want to hurt her. After tonight's meeting and after we hear from the public, we will put together all the comments and we'll look at potential changes. And I think depending on how you feel tonight, I mean, if you, if you're super confident you're in the position to adopt, but I think you might want to take a little bit of time to review the plan a bit more and make sure that, you know, you've heard all the comments. So we will keep close track of what people say tonight, and we'll come back. You might want to use this mic.
Alternatively, we could remove the ladybug.
I don't want to brush it. It is good luck, right? So.
All right. Is there anybody on the board that has anything they wish to say at this time?
Yeah, I do.
Ms. Hernandez?
Thank you, Susan and Noah for working with us and incorporating every detail. I felt like I was kind of being annoying about some of them, but it's there and it's great, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Just an observation, if I may. When we talk about sidewalks, a lot of residents think we should provide more sidewalks, but not on their side of the street. They don't want to shovel snow, they don't want to maintain the sidewalks. But across the street is fine. So every time we start to look at sidewalks, we always have that issue that comes up. And the other issue is we should try to provide more sidewalks where children can walk to school. With the traffic we have in Parsippany and the safety issues involved, even after we built many sidewalks, the safety issues prevented the school board from letting the children walk anyway. So we built the sidewalks, but they're still being bussed. So I would tread slowly on the sidewalk issue until we're absolutely sure an entire neighborhood wants them and on their side of the street, too.
Okay, any further questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In previous graphs, I noticed that you had some congestive, congestion points. I noticed that they're not here in this report.
Yeah, I can, it's page...
Page 52? Page 52.
Oh, yeah, okay. But now what about the 52?
So we have a number of maps that address transportation issues, so I'll just walk you through it really quickly. Page 51, that provides traffic congestion, and our data source there is, it's actually Google. Google takes track of people and they can kind of give you an analysis of traffic speeds in a very loose kind of a way. So, you know, from fast to slow, basically. But if you look closely, it just shows those areas that, you know, red being slow, those areas that are slow in the peak morning and evening periods. And what we show in those maps is basically at 8:35 a.m. in the morning, you see congestion, but by 10 a.m. everything's green. And that's probably what you experience, what you know. In the evening, at 5:50, a lot of the roads are red, and then by 7:20, everything is green again. So, and so that's congestion. The next map on page 52...
Just one small thing.
Oh, sure, yes.
Just so that everybody knows, this is what he's talking about from.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
And I'm assuming that it's available to the general public online somewhere.
Right there. It's right there.
Right, it's available online at parsippany.net backslash 278 backslash master plan, and also on the township's website.
Okay, I just wanted to...
Right, yes.
Okay, I was referring to the narrative that you had in your previous graphs, particularly with regard to the intersection of Troy Meadow Road and South Beverwick Road, and also Troy Road and South Beverwick Road, with regard to the left-hand turns that were difficult to make during rush hours.
And that text wasn't in the report?
No.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see if somehow it got taken out.
Okay.
Or if it's, if it got hidden somewhere.
Yeah, okay.
We'll track it down.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any further questions or comments from the board before I let the public come in and make their comments? We would love to hear the comments of any and all members of the public. If you can come up one at a time, or if you want to form a line, however you want to go about it. We have two microphones, no waiting at the moment. Come on up and let us hear what your thoughts are and help us improve this plan.
Sure.
Good evening, Ken Dolsky, Winfield Drive in Parsippany. Two comments. First, on connectivity. Connectivity is fostered by information. And about a year ago, I think Parsippany took a tremendous step backwards in terms of communicating information to its residents when they changed the website. The new website is not user-friendly, it is much harder to find things than the old website. I have never heard anybody say a good word about it. Everybody that I ask says it sucks. So if you want better connectivity, I suggest go back to something that we used to have and call it quits on the new one and, you know, just pack it in.
We need to know that, but this is the planning board, so what are your thoughts on the master plan?
Well, the master, well, I thought the master plan was all about connectivity.
Yes, it is.
That was the first thing you said.
You're correct.
So I'm telling you my opinion on how to improve connectivity.
Well, we will pass that along to the mayor.
Yeah, we can pass that along to the administration, I think.
Administration, yes.
Okay. A second thing I just wanted to comment on was I didn't hear the words "climate change" in anything. I did hear sustainability, I heard the word "energy" once, I heard, you know, "sustainable jersey," and I'm somewhat familiar with the sustainable jersey programs. But I would like to see the climate, I would like to see the master plan talk specifically about making efforts to fight climate change. You know, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change said we have 10 years to cut greenhouse gases by about 50% or it's game over. And anything that you do now, and you're thinking about changes that are going to be here in 2030, 2040, 2050, if you don't fix the climate problem in the next 10 years, it doesn't make much difference what you do beyond that. And so I think the, you know, there is a green team, and I know that it's going to be working on reducing energy usage and increasing renewable energy, but I'd like to see a more explicit emphasis on those things in the master plan. And there's other benefits. You can usually cut, you can cut costs.
It's right here.
Climate conservation, sustainability.
Yeah, we have, it does talk about mitigating some of the effects of, you know, extreme weathering due to climate change in here. So maybe just take a look and see if there's something more that...
I will admit, I didn't, I didn't have a chance.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of different sections we're in.
Working on...
It's in, you know, it's in here and it's in other places. But maybe we should put those words...
And there's also, you know, and there's also, you know, new jobs and skills in, you know, in installing renewables and maintaining renewables that you can have people in the town, you know, learn new skills that are going to be useful in the future as opposed to maintaining fossil fuel infrastructure. So it's an opportunity to be leading edge and do well economically for the town. So I would encourage as much of that as possible.
We had many discussions about that. Mr. Frigieri?
Yeah, I was just going to say that we're very cognizant, in particular about the stormwater runoff issue in our town. And so there are, when you look at that, some of the pages that Judy pointed out there, and in general, that, we're very focused on that. Some of the implications for how to correct that might not be embraced by every property owner on the commercial end. It's essentially people with these large parking lots that have been grandfathered in since a long time, certainly before my time. And that's something that creates a lot of these issues where you find ankle-deep water sometimes.
Yeah, well, part of that problem is caused by, you know, creating less permeable surface.
Yes, of course.
Another thing is caused, the more climate change you have, the worse the flooding problem is. So if you reduce, you know, reduce greenhouse gases, you fix your stormwater runoff problem, and you don't have to spend as much on it.
The stormwater and means of having the water drain into the aquifer have been the subject of many discussions we've had on this board about this. So, yes, we're very aware of what you're suggesting.
Take a look and see if, when you take a look at it, see if there's enough teeth for you.
I'll try. I was really busy last week.
It's in a few different places.
Yeah.
And then so from here, then we'll go to the ordinances and make sure that they have the teeth, too.
Yeah, I was busy fighting climate change on other fronts.
I know, you are.
I didn't have time to look at this, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello.
State your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Maya Noche, and I live at 127 Ball Avenue in Parsippany, New Jersey. Me and my partner in the back, we are working on a civics project in which we have to find a problem in our community and figure out a way to solve it. So we picked sidewalks, and I just have two questions. My first question, first of all, we weren't able to read the master plan before the meeting tonight, so my question's...
Those people weren't, don't, don't...
Yeah. My first question is, how long do you think it will take for the first person to like start working on the sidewalks from like now till then? Like, do you think it would take, like, how many years or like months do you think it would take?
By me, yeah, the question should be directed, I think, to Susan and Noah, is that, I mean...
Is that the ladybug?
You better not harm that ladybug.
I thought that was on the other one. She gets around.
So the question about sidewalks is a good one, and I think that it would be an interesting case study, I think, in a couple of years to see what, you know, what can be done. I think there are a couple ways to look at it. One is, you know, the usual steps of the steps that we've identified. The first would be to identify priority areas. As Mr. Perewick said, that there will be resistance in certain areas. And so my opinion is, the reason why we did priority areas is you want to focus on achievable results. And so it's probably not going to be possible to put sidewalks in every street, in every neighborhood, but you definitely want to focus on streets that have higher traffic speeds and are closer to schools. And so usually what that will involve will be relationships with neighborhoods and getting people involved to try and advocate for the process. It does require a lot of outreach, and there's also a financial aspect to it. People don't want to maintain their own facilities, so it might have to require the township contributing. You know, there are a lot of different arrangements. But I think the first step would be to identify priority improvements. When it comes to county-owned roads, state-owned roads, they have, that's in their purview, so you don't have to go to individual property owners. But then again, the county has their own, you know, set of rules and they have limited abilities. But there are grants that are available in certain areas, but usually they happen kind of in like localized areas. Particularly if you have a commercial corridor, that might be something that's a little bit easier to implement than along an area where you have residential area and a lot of individual property owners. So part of the plan element would be to kind of identify those improvements. As far as the timeline, I think it would require really a dedication, not just from the township, but also from neighborhoods, neighborhood associations.
Yeah, so I guess the shorter answer is not quick, but, you know, you can make progress in a lot of ways. And I think from this board's perspective, you know, when site plans come and it's, for example, a site on Route 46 that has a sidewalk on either, you know, neighboring property, and this is a missing piece, you know, that's an opportunity for this board to say, you know, you need to connect that sidewalk. And there are definitely examples of that, particularly on Route 46, and certainly that's, that I think is a fairly high priority area. Anytime I'm out on 46, I see people walking, whether there's a sidewalk or not. So things like that, I think, are things that can be happening just as part of regular site plan review without a huge investment on the township's part. But certainly, it's a period of years, I would say, longer term.
Could you, would it be, would it be appropriate to as director to page 83 on the complete street?
Yes.
Because that's where some grants are available through other institutions, designing complete streets for certain areas. They could take a look at that.
Yeah, talks about complete streets.
If they're doing a project, they might want to look into that. New Jersey has a whole, the Department of Transportation, too, they work, and they have grants for that, so you might make that part of your study.
I was just going to ask for the benefit of the public. Could you highlight the main roads that are county and state? I mean, most of us know that Route 46 is state, but it's just, everyone has the same points of reference.
Sure.
For example, 202 is county?
202 is county and one part is state and another, I believe. 10 is state, 46 is state, the interstates are state as well. We're not going to put sidewalks on the interstates. I believe that's not legal. So, yeah, the US roads are again, 10, 280, 287, 46, and then 202, basically between Littleton and Parsippany Road. It's joint, you know, managed jointly, right, in some parts by the county and some by the township. And then the two state roads are Route 10 and 53, Tabor Road. Did you want to know the county roads, too, Bruce?
Well, I'm, if you're on the roll there.
They're here, right? I'll say them. Beverwick, South Beverwick is a county road.
See, that's, most, most people aren't aware of that.
Parsipony Road, Cherry Hill Road, and West Hannover Avenue, which I believe is, is right near Greystone, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you'll recall, last year, between Route 46 on South Beverick Road up to the, up to the overpass, there were big, big potholes. And, and there was a territorial dispute between the county and the state. Because South Beverick Road is a county road, but the state has jurisdiction so many feet from each side of the interstate highway, Route 80. So, the county stopped paving on the south end of the overpass and did not pave on the north end, and there were huge potholes which were a traffic accident waiting to happen. Every time you try to avoid one, you're turning into a different lane. So the, the state said, well, that's a county road, and the county says, well, that part is a state road, and in fact, the, the park and ride belongs to the state right next to it. So that battle was going on, and I finally made a, because the Parsipony residents were the ones at risk from having accidents and, and their front ends out of alignment, I made a motion at the council meeting that we, the township paved it and send them both a bill. And, and somehow, within a, a month, that part got paved. And I don't know who paved it, but it got paved.
Councilman DPR, I'll just, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll just add the same thing's happening on Route 202 right now. The county paved one end to the other with the exception of the Route 80 overpass, which is like the surface of the moon, in terms of the craters that are, are located there. So the worst part of Route 202 did not get paved, every other portion did.
Maybe we should actually make the motion again.
We might have to do that again.
Revisit that.
Mr. Van Aken, you had a comment or a?
Yeah, yes, I just wanted to make sure, Maya, correct. Do you feel like we addressed your question appropriately?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I will note for the record that you saved the ladybug, so.
I have one more question.
Oh, please.
How big of a budget do you think we're going to have to build for this project? Because we also have to take into account the budget that's going to be, like, needed for this project.
For, for the sidewalks, right?
Yes. And like.
Well, I was going to suggest our township engineer. It should be so many dollars per linear foot, and he, and they could come up with that, so however many feet you want to, you want to sidewalk, you know, that number can be calculated quite easily, once you get that number. So many dollars per linear foot.
Let me add, if I may, that in my experience in state and local government, that there's usually quite a bit of grant money available for these sorts of things. So this is not necessarily going to be a municipally financed project or projects. There's often, there's quite a bit of money available from the Department of Transportation, especially for the, in the past 10 years or so, particularly for pedestrian and bicycle safety passageways, so it's, it's, it's a complicated question.
Okay, thank you.
Any further?
Thank you.
No, that's it.
No? All right, who would like to come up? Mr. Homiak.
How you doing?
Fine, sir. Could you give us your name and your address, please?
Well, it's Mr. Homiak, you got that right. And it's 26 Oneida Avenue in Lake Hiawatha. I think the best thing Parsipony did was get back into the Highlands Regional Conformance. And if we didn't have the influence from our last administration that favored the private sector over the, the betterment of Parsipony as a community, we would have already been in conformance. And now, we'll have tools that should have been available whether we were in conformance or not, but, for example, if we tried to use, in my case, a few times, land use capability maps that are available from a legitimate state agency, the Highlands Council, but in Parsipony, the developer's attorney would object, and that objection would be sustained. So, information available to the public, scientific information, not property rights, but how the ecosystem services or how the landscape is already doing a service for us as the way it is, was not allowed. And that should never come back to haunt this town ever again. So, the, they say, what, the best way to connect as a town, because we are kind of erased by the interstate highway system and everything, is to pay attention in, to the landscapes that we do have, the environmental resource inventory, and try to maintain them intact as much as possible. Because now you're going to have, not only your knowledge, you're going to have experts from the Highlands that can get you through and answer any question you want. And, all right, the, the storm water, in my opinion, is very, very important, but when I hear things like I heard, oh, it's a, the, the bill, the stormwater utility, you can, you can create your own stormwater utility now, but certain people refer to it as a rain tax. It's not a rain tax. So I would ask anybody to verse themselves in, in the actual language of the legislation, and the people pay the bill that are causing the problem. And then, the tax is put back into circulation to remedy the problem. And Parsipony had Detroit Brook Storm Water Study at one time that was available to them. It should have been used to defend the water view landscape, but it wasn't. But I believe that study is still viable to the, the old impervious surfaces that were, wouldn't hold water today because of their excessive impacts. So, so we have that going for us. What am I saying here? Blah, blah, blah. Oh, yeah, there's one thing in here that kind of disturbed me about the turf, artificial turf, for recreational fields. So I would hope that any open space funding would not be used for artificial turf. That's inorganic, it's lifeless, and it does, they say the cost is cheaper than cutting the grass, but I, I don't really think that's so, in my opinion.
Susan, do you have any information on that?
I forget what page it is here.
If I could just add one legal point, I don't think that dedicated open space money can be used for.
Recreation.
For turf. It can be used for various recreational, particularly passive recreational, but it can't be used for turf.
Yeah, I believe the recommendation was to look at turf on some of the fields, and that was from township staff. Who find that it, it holds up over the long term, and there's some cost benefits. But I think, to your point, Scott, that's correct. You can't kind of co-mingle open space funds.
That has nothing to do with open space funds, okay, that's good. But the artificial turf, in my opinion, it's just more impervious surface, and it actually, if it gets too hot, you can't use it, there's various chemicals in it. It's just an industry that was created, and it's promoted by the market, but when I, when I did the research on it, I, I wouldn't want it in my town. The waste reduction and recycling, you know, how long has recycling been around?
Long, long time.
It's been around, yeah, since before, smart people have been doing it forever. But we don't enforce the rules. There's no ordinance enforcement in the town. There's no street cleaning. Go up the north, I wouldn't invest one dime in North Beverick Road if the store owners up there in the commercial district don't even have the common decency or sense of community to keep their own immediate spaces clean. And that's the way I feel about that. And.
I think we do have some performance standards with regard to that, but.
They sweep it one day a week with a machine, the street, that's it. It's, it's, but, you know, normal, from the time that I grew up, and I'm almost, almost 70 years old, people use the broom every day. What, what happened, and part of the problems is the ordinance, there's no enforcement. Going to any store establishment, do you see any color-coded recycle receptacles? Hardly at all, hardly at all. One container for everything. So the Cumulative Effective Act is, if, if I'm a person and I generate minimum waste, I got to share the bill with everybody.
I mean, almost every store I've been in recently has a plastics and paper and a, and a trash.
I'll take you up in North Beverick, I'm going to take you on a tour, and I'll show you.
Okay, I haven't, I haven't been in those stores recently, but.
What else? There's another thing here, if we're built out, Parsipony's just about built out, and they're saying here, we want to get an agreement. Apparently, we have enough water to take care of the affordable housing that's going to impact the town, but for other developments, they would need additional sources. So it says they might latch on to Morris County Municipal.
It, it's more complicated than simply saying that, can you actually meet your requirements? There has to be a, a bit of a surplus, Susan.
Well, we get the surpluses right now. We're in deficit with our water. The only reason we have enough water is the two diversions, Jersey City and Morris County Municipal. The point I'm trying to make is if we're built out, and now we're going to be hit with the affordable housing, hopefully, no new land development will take place because we have plenty of developed spaces already. So hopefully, that won't happen. Why would we want to get more water to allow more development if we're built out? I don't, that, that part was, this part is, you're 500,000 gallons a day, and then you have to read a little bit before.
Right. It is a complicated issue. Basically, there's enough water for the immediate affordable housing sites. There may be other issues when it comes down to the longer-term affordable housing sites, so if you're looking at supplying those sites as well as any other potential redevelopment or, or new development, you're going to have to start looking at some, some capacity options. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't reuse sites that are already developed and maybe use them more efficiently and have, you know, a, a better water infrastructure. And doesn't, it also means that you can, and you should be doing things to improve the existing infrastructure in terms of leakages, so making that more efficient. So there's, there's a lot that needs to be done on the, the drinking water side, both on a capacity side and as well as improving the infrastructure that you have, to make sure that you can continue to serve all your development and all your anticipated future development.
And there's one more, it says, I believe it's on page 104, the budget line, like, budget line item for water leak detection, was either suspended or discontinued?
No, it's, been recently begun, for there to be a dedicated line item in the budget for leak detection. And so the recommendation is to make sure that that, that continues, so that the township is continuing to monitor leaks and making upgrades and improvements as needed to make sure that you're not losing water.
All right, so when it said it was a budget line item, that meant it's going to continue?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I read it.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, and the, the plastic bag van, it's the tip of the iceberg, anything the town can do, especially with its own facilities, the senior citizen, the pal. Get rid of the styrofoam, styrofoam is really bad, really bad. And you start reading the evidence, they're fine in plastic, it's in, it's in metabolisms of fish and animals in the soil, it's something that got out of control, and with all these, Parsipony is buried in plastic, I can tell you. But anything we can do as a municipality with our own, what do you call it, associations or whatever, or different clubs and everything, and get, get rid of as much plastic as you can, especially the styrofoams, because it's, it's really bad news. Set, set an example. And I guess I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Do we have other comments or questions from the public?
Paul Gervinelli, 5 Moraine Road. I have a simple question, I think, and maybe I missed it during the development and the presentation of the master plan, but there is not much in the master plan regarding schools. Was that purposefully done with the idea that there was going to be another study? Or what can you tell me about that?
I can tell you that the schools are under the control of the school board and the school district and not the township. This is a township document, so it can make, you know, observations, it can make some recommendations, and one of the recommendations is to continue to work closely with the school district on issues of capacity and making sure that the facilities are, you know, have a high quality. Beyond that, the township doesn't have a whole lot of, you know, concrete actions that it can take, and certainly can't dictate to the school district. So that's why it, you know, there's not a whole lot in there about the schools. But it's, it's really about partnerships and coordination.
I was just going to say that that's, that's typical for a comprehensive plan, that's, that's, usually that, that is the case.
I can share with you, though, I was on the school board many years ago, and several school boards over the last 20 years have done a needs assessment, and, and they have decided that they will, they will not plan to build a new school in Parsipony. They may, they will have to add on to existing schools, but they did not anticipate ever building a new school. The only property they have available anyway to build a school would be Volunteers Park, which they own still. And they would have to tear down the park to build a school there if they were going to. But the needs assessment, several times from several administrations, has said they don't anticipate ever needing to build a school, not a whole new school.
I can appreciate this, however, along the lines of the fact that this is a guidance document and that this is not directing anyone to do anything. I'm surprised that there is a very marked lack of addressing the schools, especially in lieu of the fact that the COA requirements don't consider it. So now we're looking at one town, but suddenly we have two sets of people, and frankly, I'm pretty tired of hearing the town hide behind the fact that it's a Board of Education issue. The Board of Education should be a partner here, and they should have been part of the master plan, were they?
Yes.
And what was their input? I mean, did they just say, no, we can't do anything?
We did meet with the superintendent, and that was mainly to, to get an understanding of where their capacity issues are, which schools are crowded, which, which schools have to bus, which neighborhoods have to bus, et cetera. And so, that all is in the master plan in terms of, you know, acknowledging the issues that, that I think we all know, acknowledging that the COA sites will create additional pressure on the schools, and acknowledging the need to continue to work with the school district on issues of capacity and school improvements. I mean, I will say that one of the recommendations is a community facilities element, as we discussed, and I think that that probably would get into a little bit more detail than a, you know, broad master plan typically does. So I would, I would hope that if, if the township does pursue that element, that the school district could be brought even more into that discussion.
Does anyone here know if there's any way to approach the Board of Education with the idea of having an educational master plan, which many communities do have? I look to anyone here who can help us with that.
It's a different government agency, I would suggest that be brought to the school board, I hate to say it, but that's the short answer of it, is they're very distinct government entities.
All right.
With less overlap than a lot of people in public work think there should be. You know, New Jersey's got, you know, something of a unique model in that we, we put a wall between our municipalities and our school boards, for better or for worse. That's the model that we use, it's often problematic. We didn't invent it here in Parsipony, that's for sure. That's the, that's the model that we have statewide.
But we do communicate with the school board.
Absolutely.
We have shared services now. We're using. We're using their property for Volunteers Park. We pay them a dollar a year. The school board, in turn, is using our old library as their administration building. We charge them a dollar a year for that. We have police officers now in the two high schools, the two junior highs, and rotating through the elementary schools. That's a cooperative effort between the school board and the township, and it's working very, very well. We're concerned about the safety of our children in school. So we do deal, we do work with them, we do communicate with them. And none of us on the council or on the planning board are averse to further communicating with them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other members of the public that have comments?
Yeah.
Tom Williams, 41 Long Ridge Road. I know we're known as a tree city, perhaps in the long term. We didn't talk about trees, but we can modify clear cutting. I know we do a lot of clear cutting when developers do their work now. And Route 10 is gonna be more modified, and I think 202 will have some development done. And the rule of thumb is tear them all down. Where I'm in Puttingstone, we tore down four or five lots, completely wiped out 100-year-old trees everywhere because it was approved. So perhaps in the future, we can still do cutting, but maybe have someone in our own departments go there and say, try to preserve this tree, try to save this one. A modified approach, not just a blank statement. And therefore, we can keep our trees. In addition, on Route 10, as it become more developed, like Hanover is over by, is it Sedernose? Or where they tore down all the trees along the one side, which I don't know why they did, but they tore all the trees down by minimum. They're all wiped out. Terrible, ugly. Maybe we can do the opposite. Maybe on Route 10, as they're developing, they can add trees and then put the sidewalks on the other side. There's your start of your sidewalks with your trees, much like they do in Hilton Head, if you've been down there, or any other community in the country. They put trees by the side of the road and then a sidewalk. It enhances the beauty of the neighborhoods, makes the city look less blacktop and concrete, and it's very, very conducive to a lifestyle that we want to have in Precipiny, a commuter city. Also, lakes, I don't know, are we taking advantage of our lakes? As a citizen of 28 years, I've never touched the body of water here in our community. It would be nice when they flood out next time, because they will flood. When you build on water, something happens. Water happens. Maybe we buy that property and put a beach in and make it only available to community members. Now, nobody else is gonna like it, but no one likes anything. So that's how it works. You just gotta modify it. I also believe you do everything in incremental steps. It's easier to digest for most citizens. A little bit at a time with sidewalks. Do one area, increase in 45, 50, 100 years, it's done. Much like 200 years for a cathedral. It did get done, but took 200 years and a lot of money and people. The end. Thank you.
Thank you. I like that.
Very good. I do think we've been discussing exactly those issues, so...
Mr. Chairman, just, I really appreciated the comment about having the trees in between the streets and the sidewalk. I think that also promotes a safety aspect that we could consider, so I like that inclusion.
It's true.
Okay. See if we can find ways of encouraging that. Yes, ma'am?
It tends to be safer for pedestrians to walk along the sidewalk if you've got a green.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Meryl Patenza. I live in the Sedgefield section of Precipiny. My husband and I were newly retired. I'm a nurse and my husband's a retired teacher. We're very concerned about what's going on on Route 10 and how that's going to impact. It is gonna impact the schools. Nobody knows how many kids are gonna be living in those, you know, apartments. And that's what really worries us, because we would like to stay, we would like to, like I said to somebody when we had the Sedgefield Halloween Parade, I wanna just go out in a pine box. I wanna stay here for the rest of my life. And I don't know if we're gonna be able to afford to, you know, when I see the water and sewer bill, how ours has just gone through the roof and our property taxes, and now what's gonna happen? Because we're gonna need a new school.
Well, our planners can discuss the number of bedrooms in each of the apartments and how that affects the number of schoolchildren would normally come from that.
But you know and I know, there are people that, there are multiple families in, you know, some of the apartments and they have a lot, you know, they have a number of kids because they wanna take use of our schools. And, you know, we're just concerned about, because the schools are, you know, overburdened, Littleton is.
We understand. There will definitely be some additional kids from these apartments. It is part of our affordable housing requirements that is not of our doing.
No, I know.
And so, yes, we have to look into it.
Yeah. It just speaks to what the chairman was saying earlier about, you know, close coordination with the school district. So that, you know, the township understands their needs and vice versa.
So how much affordable housing is gonna be there?
Which?
Which development?
Which development in particular? Are you talking about 1515?
Stanbury.
Stanbury? I remember it was 30 odd units on site.
I think there was about 400 total units, and I wanna say it was 40 to 60 affordable. I don't, it's been a while.
Yeah. So except for the affordable units, they're all one bedrooms and studios, I believe, a couple twos. Only for the affordable units.
And only, I think, three or four of those units in the total development.
Right. So, you know, those are the units that typically generate more kids. It also relates to income, so if the rents are fairly high, then generally, those don't generate as many kids. And if you think about that, if, well, if you think about it, if you can afford a high rent and you have a family of, you know, two or three kids, you'd probably... But you'd probably, most people would rather have a house with a yard if they can afford that rent level. It's an apartment complex, perhaps, that has a lower rent level and people are sort of trying to get into the district and that's what they can afford. So, you know, the age of the complex also matters. So these are a lot of different factors that could create more schoolchildren. But generally, the affordable units are the ones that have the three bedrooms and larger units, and they're the ones that create more kids. So it's definitely an issue that the township is aware of. Like the chairman said, there is an obligation that the township has to abide by and the schoolchildren are one impact of that traffic is another. So it's certainly something that the township is looking at.
So I guess it's not up to the planning board about if, because there's two schools in Precipiny that currently have closed. You know, the Baptist Church one and one, St. Christopher's has been closed for a number of years. Would they ever consider, or you don't know, would, who's in charge of making that? Whether they could use that rent-out space? Okay.
It's the Board of Education.
When you ask questions about 1515, though, excluding the fair housing obligation, a lot of those are studio-type and one-bedroom. That will attract mostly what they call the bookends. The bookends are young couples, both working, in their careers, don't have children yet, not ready for a white picket fence yet, or the empty nesters who don't need the big house anymore, don't wanna shovel snow and cut grass, and they would move in. So you got the two age limits, the two bookends, that would move into something like that, more than families with children. The only exception to that is the fair housing portion, which will be the two- and three-bedroom.
Are we being fined as a town?
Please use the microphone.
I'm sorry. Are we being fined as a town because we don't have enough senior?
We're not being fined. The courts have imposed this for years. In fact, all the time I've been elected official, we've had Mount Laurel decisions handed down.
The ones for seniors. I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't mean to interrupt. But I'm gonna say for seniors, is there any kind of, somebody had mentioned during a previous meeting that we, as a town, are being fined because we don't have enough affordable housing for seniors?
No.
That's not true.
Why would somebody say that?
I know.
That's irresponsible.
Yeah, in fact, you're capped at, you know, how you can get credit for the affordable housing. You're capped on how much of it can be senior, and the township has sort of at its limit. So you're actually fined in terms of affordable senior, at least on paper, affordable senior apartments.
Sure, I can tell you that we've seen initiatives for additional senior housing as part of our affordable housing obligation, but we're unable to do it because
Exactly.
we're capped at how much senior housing we can have, and we're at our maximum.
That was another point they were talking about. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments or questions? Mr. Homiak, if you wish to come forward and ask again, or...
Nick Homiak again from Oneida. I'd like to make one more comment. I think this town has enough highly qualified people that some of these committees, like the environmental committee, should become a commission. And you should have a member of the environmental committee on a planning and a zoning variance board. Because very, when I got to know some of these people, believe me, you got a lot of talent around here and they belong right where you guys are as a commission.
The mayor appoints to this board.
We're fortunate to have one, I believe. Member of the environmental committee.
We had a commission here.
An official, you're not a commissioner from the, there's only an environmental committee, which is only...
We're not a commission yet.
Right.
The environmental committee is an advisory committee.
And hopefully, you will become a commission, because towns with environmental commissions have a lot more power controlling developers. The Highlands will help, but having a commissioner, if she was a commissioner right now, you guys give her the gavel.
We had that a couple weeks ago. Any other comments or questions from the public at this time? I would like to thank you all for coming out tonight. I would like to thank you all for your comments and questions. Every single one was valuable and useful. We are planning at this time not to take a vote tonight because our chairman, Bob Keller, who would have loved to have been here for this, was unable to make it tonight. We will wait, we will allow the thoughts here to settle and see if we can improve what we've already got, which, again, my congratulations, actually, to the planners, because I think they did an excellent job of putting that together.
Mr. Chairman, one question. And Susan, just for the public's benefit, will the online comment section still be open while we're in this holding pattern?
What do you think, Scott? Yep. The comments can continue to be submitted online.
Okay.
I believe there's, it's on the website, there's a mechanism for that. And I just wanna echo the thanks to the members of the public who spoke. I thought the comments were great, and there's several things that we're gonna go back and give you some food for thought and maybe some recommendations on some tweaks to strengthen some of what the plan already says. But I think there's some good ideas that came out tonight. Thanks for that. So we'll see you next time.
All right. Shall we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Mandel. Say again for Jerry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Again, thank you all for coming out.